6:00 PM, we will call to order the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting being held Thursday, February 1st, 2024. And with that, Maricela, would you please do roll call?
Commissioner Vanderstar.
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Vice Chair Adam.
Present.
Chairman Frost.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please rise? Commissioner Pro is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start out this evening with a call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone in the audience, first of all, that would like to address the commission this evening? Is anyone online that would like to address the commission? Nope, okay. With that, we will close the call to the public and go to Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion Approval/Disapproval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting conducted on January 18th. Commission members, any concerns, comments, questions?
No questions.
Okay. We'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of January 18th, 2024, as written.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Kapalongo for approval of the minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I jumped into this and neglected to recognize that our Vice Mayor is here with us this evening. We appreciate him as usual being here with us.
And Councilmember Buchalot is online.
Oh, yes, I should have looked up here. Councilmember Buchalot is online. Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for the tutorial. Be more observant. Whole business. Presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval/approval with conditions or denial of the C.D. Farms planned unit development. Maricela, is there a staff presentation this evening?
There is a short staff presentation, and then there will be a presentation given by the applicants. Today, we are talking about C.D. Farms, the site here at the northwest corner of Plant Road and Adamsville Road. C.D. Farms PUD is the request of a planned unit development for an approximately 659.8 acres for a master planned community, which is called C.D. Farms. The goal is to establish the entitlements for the development and rezone from the current hard zonings, which include single-family residential, R16, light industrial, LI, neighborhood multifamily residential, R2, neighborhood business, B1, and multifamily residential, MFR. The owner is Mr. Chris Dobson, or one of the owners, and Coen Van Lu Consultants, CVL, is the one who submitted the application. The consultants completed two neighborhood meetings in June of 2023 and in October of 2023 for this PUD, and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and discussed this PUD and the previous meeting on January 4th of 2024. After the revisions, we put together a staff report. Within that staff report, we have stipulations in the very beginning that were, has been agreeable with the consultant, CVL, and we found that C.D. Farms lies within the Town of Florence 2022 general plan planning area, and it did not require a general plan amendment to be put through the process. The subject sites, proposed uses, and PUD zoning are consistent with the land use place types of suburban neighborhood, innovation district, and open space, which are listed within the document, the general plan document. The proposed zone change will conform to the town's vision of a mixed-use master planned community within this area, within that suburban neighborhood zoning, and access to the site will be provided on Plant Road and Adamsville Road. A TIA has been completed, and house street improvements are included in the PUD to meet traffic requirements. The C.D. Farms PUD will add more housing, commercial opportunities, and will help support the residential needs of Florence. The request is in the interest of the general welfare of the public, and as stated previously, those stipulations can be found in the staff report in the very beginning. With that, I will relinquish control here to the applicants.
Maricela, if we had a question about the stipulations, do you want us to do that now or later on?
Later, please.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. I'm Julie Vermillion with the applicant, Coen Van Lu Consultants, located at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix, Arizona. With me tonight is Ryan Weed and Chris Dobson, the property owner. I'd just like to start off by thanking you all for hearing our case this evening, and thank you, Maricela, for the presentation and for all of your help getting us here tonight. So, as Maricela pointed out, this is C.D. Farms. We're requesting a PUD. She already went through the location and some gent-- oh, let me put this to full screen. All right. Located at northwest corner of Adamsville and Plant. I've have a few slides here summarizing the revisions we've made since the last time we saw you on January 4th. We read through the PUD top to bottom to ensure that we've addressed all of the concerns you shared with us, and thank you so much for that feedback so we can make sure that we're providing the best plan possible for this site. So I'm just going to go through a summary of all the changes we've made, and then later in the presentation, I'll dig down into the details. So I'll just start--
Recording in progress.
Oh, okay. So I'll just start with the discrepancy noted at the study session between our street classifications for the perimeter roadways and the general plan. That has been addressed, and I'll refer to our updated language later in this presentation. The roadway cross-section provided on Adamsville has been enhanced with landscape buffers. We've enhanced landscape and home sites. We've enhanced community entry and the neighborhood parks. We've added additional details and representative photos for our amenities. The flood zone has been labeled at the southwest corner of the site, and will ensure it's been safely routed around or through the property during the preliminary design phase. Several of our hardscape materials and wall elevations and tree monuments has been enhanced with additional detail for the materials and the colors, and we've determined that the average water demand, it would be approximately 630,000 gallons, and average sewer flow approximately 400,000 gallons. So our tree planting locations have been modified on our open space exhibits to ensure that we have a clear play area provided for families. The turf at the community entry and in other areas in our plan have been specifically labeled with the intent to irrigate it by reclaimed water. It's been noted throughout our document. And our turf will be in play areas and not located on the side slopes of basins where they would be unusable. Again, those large 20-foot landscape buffers are provided along the entire frontage of the property. Those will be detailed and illustrated in exhibits that I'll show you further in this presentation. And then finally, our single-family residential front setbacks have been revised. We know that having that clearance is extremely important, so we revised the language to read. The setback would be 15 feet from the property line to livable, 18 feet from the property line to the face of garage, and 22 feet from the back of sidewalk to ensure that we have more than enough room in front of our homes.
Okay.
Here's a new slide. It's referring to the Florence general plan and those roadway street classifications that we discussed. So we have those-- oh, I'm sorry. I'll skip through to that slide. Oh. These are old slides, so I'll skip through here. This is our conceptual land use plan. You've seen this already. I just wanted to point out, we have 20.2 acres planned for commercial and mixed use on Plant. We're preserving the existing cemetery in its entirety with an additional buffer around it, and then we're also providing a 5- to 10-acre portion of land reserved for public safety use if it's needed within 10 years of development. So that's a new stipulation that you can read through when you review the stipulations, and we'll have more details provided in there. We have that estimated floodway in the northwest corner there that we're intending to have amenities or perhaps a future park space for families to play. We have that north-south corridor called out. That alignment, of course, is still being determined, and should ADOT continue with their current proposed alignment, we will adjust the plan accordingly. And then, as noted here, the individual parcel design will be determined by the end users. So we have those major collector roads and general bubbles planned out, but we'll flush this out in more detail during the preliminary design. Here's that map I was referring to, the general plan road classification. So you can see that Plant Road is that light blue minor arterial. Adamsville Road is that green major collector on the general plan. We wanted both of these streets to be consistent, and we wanted to be consistent with the general plan classification. So we're referring to both of these roadways as a four-lane road, and we have a street section that could work for either major collector or minor arterial as a four-lane road section, and I'll show you that further in the presentation. So here's our roadway phasing plan. We made that update to the classification as minor arterial slash major collector to accommodate both terminology, to ensure that we're providing the same section for both roadways. I'd also like to note that we'll be providing turn lanes to mitigate traffic impacts as determined by the TIA and approved by the town engineer. Each phase of development will be responsible for completion of all off-site and onsite improvements, and then potential signalization will occur if it's warranted by a signal analysis and required by the town engineer. Here's our water phasing plan. I don't believe we made any changes to this. Our sewer phasing plan has remained the same. Here's our enhanced collector road section. This has remained the same. It follows the town standard enhanced collector road section. This will be for our primary collector, Hiscox Lane. You can see we have detached sidewalks with a five-foot landscape buffer and a multi-use path, raised median with two-way left turn lane. Here's our modified major collector. This is for the entrance roads that go into the community. You can see that also has the detached sidewalk with the landscape buffers on either side, and then the center raised median or two-way turn lane, depending on its location within the project. And here's that minor arterial major collector section I was referring to for Adamsville Road and Plant Road. We modified this section from the town standard to include 20-foot landscape buffers. So you can see that landscaped area with the detached sidewalk, trees on either side. So anyone who may be walking the perimeter of the community, biking around the community, or driving by, they would be able to enjoy that additional landscaping that we're providing. So that should be a beautiful streetscape along those arterial roadways. And then here's just an example of what that condition might look like. So you can see our 20-foot landscape buffer with our split accent fencing. We have our staggers in the walls to provide some visual interest, and you can see we have landscaping between the curb and sidewalk. We have another exhibit identifying, you know, a cul-de-sac condition where we might have view fencing to allow some view corridors into the community from the street. Might break up the wall a little bit, provide some more visual interest, and then we have landscaping on the other side. So either of these conditions will be applied around the perimeter where And then our open space trails and amenities plan, we added some additional trail connectivity to the west, just to increase that connectivity for pedestrians moving forward. Our neighborhood park exhibit, as I noted, we've removed some of those trees in the active turf field to allow for more open play areas in the parks, and we've also provided some images and renderings for what our proposed amenities will look like. So that should give you a better idea of what the final product will be. We have that large Ramada, beanbag toss, horseshoes, tot lot with shade, turf play, crawl tunnel, and more. So this is just a small example of what we're planning for these major parks. And of course, they'll be high and dry from primary drainage uses for year-round use so everyone can enjoy them. And then that main entry plan, it was noted that there was a comment about irrigating our turf with reclaimed water. So throughout our proposal, we've noted that that would be the intent to-- so the entry turf here is intended to be irrigated by that reclaimed water. We also made a few revisions to this plan, just some enhancements. The wall and sign master plan has generally remained the same. The main entry elevations, we added some visuals of the materials that we plan to use for these. You can see that we're using that agrarian theme with the pedestrian arches inspired by the shape of barns and that split rail fence, but we're utilizing modern materials to ensure durability and longevity for these items. And here's an example of that multifamily signage and retail signage with those same Our wall elevations have been updated. So you can see we have contrasting colors, contrasting materials, and we have those cobblestone veneer on the columns to really make them stand out. So we believe we added some visual interest here. We have landscaping in front to soften those walls. And then I've just provided a few conceptual home elevations. This is purely for illustrative purposes, but we want to show you these elevations to represent the quality of the homes that we're planning to populate the community with. So these are good examples of our intent And I believe there's one more. So you can see they're nice, high-quality products that we're hoping to incorporate. Okay, I'd like to give just an overview of the benefits we believe this proposal will have on the town. So this proposal will establish zoning for commercial opportunities. We're committed to 20.2 acres of commercial use. That allows for shops, restaurants, commercial services, mixed use, live-work-play residential environments, or employment opportunities. We don't have an end user onboard yet, but we're working on that. We have those 5- to 10 acres of land reserved for public safety if needed within the next 10 years per the stipulation. We have that existing cemetery preserved in its entirety. We have-- we've been coordinating closely with the superintendent, and we will have a school donation agreement finalized at the time of development. Of course, we have those new parks with those tot lots, games, picnic areas for families to come together and enjoy, and then we have those roadway improvements that we discussed. And of course, we're committed to all of these items that we're promising, and it will be upheld through the town's plan review and permitting process. So we are making those commitments today, and we will be complying with those moving forward on all of our development plans. And I'd just like to wrap it up by mentioning development fees. I know that that was a topic during the study session. So we just did some quick calculations based on the town's current fee schedule, and we believe at ultimate build-out, our community will bring an estimated $24 million in development impact fees to support the town. Of course, those fees will go to Parks and Recreation, police and fire, road improvements, and water and wastewater. So we believe that that will be a great contribution to the town. So that's the presentation. Are there any questions that you might have that I can answer?
Commission members?
Just, if I may, I noticed the $24 million contribution. So how did you arrive at that, and will that, number one, and number two, will that cover, more than cover the costs of infrastructure?
Well, I'll tell you, we calculated that based off of the town's current development impact fee schedule based on the ultimate build-out of the community. So it's estimated right now. I know that the development impact fee schedule is updated periodically, so that is an estimated number subject to change. I'm not exactly certain of what the development impact fees will be used for. I know that's up to the discretion of the town.
I think at the last meeting, we had asked about the park areas and whether they were open to the public, and I'm not sure that I understood correctly. Will they be open to the public?
Our parks will not be gated, so they will be accessible to everybody who walks into them. Yeah, so they will be--
Okay. No, that's, I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you.
Okay, I have several comments and questions, and I'll just turn through the packet that you gave us. First one, I appreciated that you added that new section about general plan road classification. It gave some explanations on that and provided information on the current preferred alternative for the north-south freeway corridor. I understand that that freeway corridor, as shown, is 1,500 feet in width, and that will, the exact corridor will be determined at a future time. And in talking to someone who I met that served on planning of that area, part of the reason, well, a great chunk of the reason that that corridor exists where it's at in this particular location is because this is the narrowest location to cross the Gila River in this area, and also it threads the needle between several Native American historic sites so that it doesn't impact those. And so with your, I'm still very, very, very concerned, I can't emphasize that enough, with your desire to push that basically to the edge of your development because it has a cascading problem when you do that. So I'm not, I'm not really in favor of changing the alignment on the freeway corridor. It benefits your property, but the cumulative effect of what happens with that from that point on, to me, becomes a big problem.
Commissioner, Chairman, my name is Ryan Weed with Coen Van Lu at 4550 North 12th Street in Phoenix. I'll go back to that exhibit that Julie had up earlier, just to look at that together briefly. And so, as you'll note, the north-south corridor is outlined here on the general plan outlining our site. What it does is it leaves this little sliver of property that is essentially bisected by the corridor, which, you know, so, and also, you'll note that we're actually not, we're fully accommodating when it leaves our property before it crosses the Gila River. We're actually showing it more on our property than what the general plan map and what ADOT's north-south corridor freeway study shows. So in reality, we may have to actually give up less property for the corridor than what we're already showing. So I don't think we're inhibiting or changing anything as it leaves our property as we go north, because if you look at the land plan here, we're just trying to, and maybe there's some artist interpretation here, differences between our exhibit and the general plan exhibit, but we're essentially just trying to mimic what the general plan and what ADOT has called out for. And of course, as you mentioned, it will ultimately be reduced from a 1,500-foot wide corridor to a 400-foot wide corridor, and when that happens, you know, I guess no one knows where that corridor will be trimmed to, but I have to believe that ADOT will take into account the zoning that takes place within the town's purview when they do that. I mean, we're not causing it to cross the river in a more burdensome location. I mean, I guess, you know, from my perspective, my view of it, it seems as though they're kind of crossing it in the largest corridor that they could possibly cross it in, and that it would have been easier for them to cross in, say, over here. That's a much narrower corridor, or over here. So I'm not sure, the person that you spoke with, I'm not sure where they were coming from when they mentioned that to you. So my apologies, and I don't want to overstep in my statement there, but this feels like that we are not, one, we're not shifting it in a way that's causing ADOT any additional problems in the way I review the graphics, and I'm not sure that, so I guess if they chose to cross it here, whether it's wider or narrower, this is where they chose to cross, and we're not suggesting that that be changed.
And I think what he was referring to is that the flood area is much narrower there.
Oh, perhaps.
To the west of you, it expands into a very large degree.
Okay, understood. But again, we're not proposing that we shift it off our property. We're not proposing that we shift it to a different location on the northern edge of our property. We're only simply trying to not end up with a little triangular-shaped property that's kind of becomes unusable for our development.
This is definitely, property definitely takes the hit. In your statement here, you say, "Our team has been working with ADOT and anticipates that ADOT will agree with our request and locate the freeway corridor as proposed along the western boundary." Anticipates a nice word. And just, where are you at in that process? I guess, I don't want to get the town caught in a bad situation because town staff and council has already approved this corridor, and--
Understood.
I don't want to get them in a bad place by having a developer come in and say, "This is what we prefer. This is what we're moving forward with," and then have ADOT and the town get in a bad way over this situation.
Well, during the Tier One process that ADOT went through, we made them aware of our desires officially, and they, I don't believe, have started their Tier Two study, and I'm not sure that they have funding to do so. Their Tier Two study would involve them narrowing that 1,500-foot wide corridor down to the 400-foot wide corridor. And when that, when that process, when they retrieve funding and when that process starts-- when that process starts, the Tier Two study process starts, we'll be right there with ADOT, I'm guessing alongside the town, and advocating for the location of the corridor that we are, we prefer. Of course, you know, all those things are subject to change, and as I mentioned during the work-study session, this project is a five-to-seven-year project, and should ADOT have funding and proceed with their studies somewhere along the lines and this corridor need to shift slightly, we're still here, and Chris Dobson's still owning the property at that time, and we're still open to discussions.
And I think their approach is that that alignment has been put in place, and you're asking them to shift it up the other way around. So, not like we're going to get in here first, and then you're going to have to shift your alignment. I think they've kind of put the first line in the sand, so to speak. So I'm very concerned about this and the precedent and the fact that we have other developments that are honoring that corridor and moving forward. I'm concerned about a snowball effect here of unintended consequences if we start making changes now. But I understand the impact. It's obvious that there's a tremendous impact on this property. So that's my concern and thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Under street sections, you added, referred exhibit M2, modified street section, a 20-foot landscape buffer will be provided along the perimeter roadways. I'm assuming this also will be maintained by the HOA?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I appreciate, in the tables with development standards, how you amended those to provide the guidance, which you already alluded to, about the setbacks to the garages. Thank you. That spelled it out very clearly.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, I didn't flag everything. I just have to turn through it. And I see-- And I see in Exhibit F, where you have, you're kind enough to respond to our concern and put pedestrian connections, and in your exhibit, you put them at all three locations. And planning staff, I would hope that we could give them some direction and pick one of those. I think that'll be critical. If we have one picked, and when ADOT decides to go through the planning, if we have one picked as a pedestrian access across the freeway corridor, then they will, they will have something that they will have to respond to and build that across the freeway. So I would, I would hope that by the time this project moves along, we'll be able to narrow that down to one of those versus, they've given us three options here. And I thank you for responding to those comments. I think that pedestrian corridor is a good thing for interconnectivity.
You're welcome.
Just would ask staff to do some homework there and pick the one, the best suit so that we can move forward and in our dealings with ADOT as well. Under streetscape, you provided us with a couple of very nice exhibits. The typical street scape condition one exhibit are, I really like that, in the five-foot section between the back of the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, you have low plants. I'm very concerned with trying to put trees in that five-foot area. Those are the trees that get trimmed by garbage trucks and other large trucks and just become a problem. And also becomes a heave concern for curb gutter and sidewalk when the roots start growing. So I would ask you to move those out of there. I think that's, that just becomes an ongoing problem, not only for you trying to maintain it, but for the town, just for that look. I hate that squared-off trim pattern of streets that are, trees that are growing too close to the street.
Yes, understood.
And with this, as well as our cross-section on the street, I know you have a sidewalk there. Is the intention to meander that sidewalk?
On these two, these two conditions here? Or the cross-section of the street?
Well, it, one of them depicts an aerial view and one's a cross-section view of that six-foot sidewalk. I would hope in that situation that we'll have a little bit of meander to it so we don't have just a straight sidewalk. Give us a little bit of aesthetic meander to it.
Yeah, that's easy to accommodate.
Sorry. Should have tagged stuff a little better here.
Mr. Chairman, while you're looking, just, you know, keep in mind, Commissioner, that what we're looking at are concepts. All of these are going to be fine-tuned at the point of development, whether it's subdivision plat, you know, where we have full-scale landscape plans to respond to and all those types of things. These are basically just conceptual at this point.
Understood. I just want the concepts to be a little bit closer.
Yep.
And if we want a meandering sidewalk, I'd rather say it at this point in time so it's there, going in, and not have trees in this five-foot area, which is just too narrow to try to put a tree. I think, rather give them some more guidance going in and to those that they're going to hand this off to as they develop and other sub-developers come in and start building the individual areas. And I'm, I'll just use Exhibit F again. I drew in the 100-year flood hazard area, and it, we noted this previously, that it actually takes in the bigger part of SFR 14. I mean, it cuts, there's just the one, basically the southeast corner of that that's not in the flood hazard area, and it cuts almost straight through SFR 15 from the Gila River. And then you have a smaller flood hazard area that cuts through SFR 17 down at the corner, which you called out in writing, but don't show in this. And I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that this might give the wrong impression when the size of those flood hazard areas are much bigger than what's depicted here.
I think there may be, what we're seeing there on the flood hazard areas on the FEMA map, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but maybe the flood plain versus the floodway. And so we would, of course, be looking to recapitalize and recapture some of the flood plain area, but still respect the floodway area. And so we did, I would need to look at those maps again, but I think we're, you know, from a bubble plan perspective, I think we're, we are, you know, conceptually, there still will be floodway area that is left as open space, but there will be some developable property created in that area. As a part of a land development process, we may be able to fill the area to remove some portions of that property from the flood zone. But to be determined, to your point.
Okay. And I pass to our compadres up here, the depiction that I have of that area to show that it's quite a bit bigger than what is shown here. And if this truly is floodway, I didn't, the map I looked at didn't go down, the FEMA map that I looked at did not designate floodway. It only designated floodplain. The floodway area, the mapping ended upstream of this, so I'm not sure where your information's coming from. I noted that Ms. Vermillion, when she talked to us, said that a hydrologic study was going to be done. And what is your intention with that study?
Our intentions with that study will be to determine accurately where that floodplain is located, because some, as you probably know, some floodplains are Zone A, and those Zone A floodplains are essentially a proximate. So we will use current methodologies to better understand the existing flood zone and determine which portions are developable and which portions are not. And that's where I feel like the floodplain map on FEMA's records currently shows a blue line, or a blue, a blue shape, or a blue blob, as I refer to it at the office. And that, that blue blob, though, is somewhat subject to interpretation by the engineering staff as we get into the final design process. And when we do that model, we will then be able to determine how much of that parcel is developable and how much is not, depending on what the current, when we actually map the floodplain water surface elevations, that I don't believe FEMA has done so yet in this location.
Yeah, just understand that that line that you call the blue blob, FEMA calls it a hard and fast line that depicts the floodplain, and anytime you do anything inside that line, you are within the 100-year flood hazard area unless you do a study that puts a letter of map revision together that changes it. So I don't know if that's the detail that you're going to go to to process a letter of map revision on this whole thing or not.
Yes, first, we would do a conditional letter of map revision if we determine it's worthwhile to do, and then we would do the formal letter of map revision, both through the FEMA process and Penau County's process.
Yeah, I just raised a concern because it, that line depicts a much larger area than what is shown on here, and I don't want anybody to misinterpret that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And then the last one, I think my last big one deals with your entry. Ms. Vermillion said that there was a request by us to use reclaimed water. The request, I think, was, "Don't put turf here."
Yes, so your request from our last hearing was that a desire to not place turf in areas where turf would not be usable. We do, however, have the wastewater treatment plant located immediately to us, and we do see an opportunity to reuse reclaimed water from that wastewater treatment plant. So our thought process was, and my interpretation of our work-study session was, the use of turf in areas where turf could not necessarily be enjoyed, but use of turf in a, in a aesthetic entryways like we're showing, I took that to mean from the commission that that may be considered a waste of water in our air environment. So what we did, though, is offered up to use, if turf is going to be installed there, that we will irrigate it with reclaimed water that's becoming immediately available from the wastewater treatment plant. Now, of course, if reclaimed water's not made available to us, then we're happy to respect the commission's thought process on not providing turf at those locations.
My understanding from the very long discussions that we had as part of the general plan process and water resources, that the town's intention with its reclaimed water is to recharge it back into the ground and bank it for future use and whatnot. They saw more value in doing that than putting a purple pipe system in the ground, which you have to keep energized, provide storage for it. The cost benefit just did not pencil out, and so I would say just go to artificial turf on this.
That may or may not be something that we want to ask our future HOA to take on, just simply from the cost of maintenance and replacement of the artificial turf, but it's something we can consider, take under advisement.
Our town engineer is here, and I can ask him to comment on it. Chris, that is the plan, right? We don't intend on having a purple pipe distribution system?
Good evening, members of the PNC, Commissioner. It's funny that this comes up. We are actually going to be studying this in more detail this year. You are absolutely correct, based on the discussions that were had previously and under that town manager. I have tasked our water resource analyst to go through several different communities, meet with those communities, understand why some communities are still doing purple pipe, understand why some communities are no longer utilizing that, no longer adding infrastructure, and then why certain communities have never done that. So I think we're humble enough to understand that we don't know everything, and this is going to be part of a much bigger project as part of the water portfolio this year. I think intuitively, it makes sense to any person, why would we recharge, let it get down to the ocre and then pump it out once again? Common sense says one thing, and then the way that things are set up as far as how credits are, the cost and all that. So that's the unfortunate thing. I feel like right now, what may appear to be intuitive is not how it matches up to the long-term use of those credits, the value of those credits. So absolutely correct, we are going to recharge, we are recharging, we're putting more than 1,000 acre foot. So approximately about 67, 68% of what we pump, we put back into the ground today, and we will continue to do that, and we will be updating council at a future agenda as to the results of that study, once we look at that in its entirety. So, yes, sir.
And speaking from experience with a small community that got very big, and we opted at that point to do the purple pipe system, and it only worked because of the nature of the development and the fact that the developers would put it in, and we kind of had an open playbook to deal with, understanding that we would have to provide storage, diurnal storage, we'd have to provide booster pumps, and all that other stuff that comes with this, because you're basically, you're setting up another water system.
Correct.
And it becomes very complex and whatnot, and with the laws as they are now, as you have alluded to, even though commonsensically, you might think that sounds really good, the way the laws are set up, putting it into the ground is becoming the preferred alternative, the best management practice, so to speak.
Unfortunately, as well, the AMAs are treated differently from Phoenix to Penau, amongst others as well. There's also this growing idea that we can't look at just one part of the system, we have to always look at it as a utility and not just water or wastewater. So is, in the future, the idea that if we look at, again, this one-mile safe haven to be able to recover from where we're recharging, is it going to be more cost-effective to have one large regional plant, wastewater, that we are going to then have to pump out into a system to have regional recharge? Or is it going, which, I think previously, the idea of having a big plant, think of like 91st Avenue in Northern, a big, major regional plant, will actually save the rate base dollars long-term. It'll be, it'll be costly when that happens, when regionalization will occur, but over the long-term, it'll probably be the most. But then when we look at now, because of the water laws and the ability to recharge and to recover that, it has further complicated that. So even the people who were putting purple pipe in the ground years ago and the people who weren't, I don't know if their same thought process would be today because of the changes in just the ability to alter our designation of assured water supply through recharge. So this is an extremely complicated problem, and we need to look at it globally. So we're going to do that this year. Like I said, we're going to meet with other municipalities, we're going to study, we're going to meet with ADWR, and we're going to try to formulate something that is mathematical, computational in nature, and say, "This is why we believe this to be the best approach." And if that means moving forward, although there's a missed opportunity maybe for purple pipe in the downtown, it can't be neglected for future projects if this is the approach. So I think all of those things need to be evaluated. There needs to be a greater scale to our wastewater master plan, and I mean for all 65 square miles, and with the idea of the planning area is even larger than that. We need to look at our water resources, recharge, our designation. None of this exists in a vacuum, and unfortunately, it all has to be looked at. So we're planning on doing that. And at some point, we will probably have a consultant compile some of this raw data into more, again, like I said, computational analysis and try to figure out some of this. In the end, there will always be a philosophical part to this as well, because, again, the idea of where we recharge and all of that is also being evaluated. So thank you.
A lot of moving parts in here, but I guess on the, for the short term and moving with this project forward, development team, I would put, put artificial turf in here. Because I think when all is said and done, that because, in order to make a reclaimed water system, you got to build a separate water system essentially, and my experience is that it's, it's not going to pencil. So I don't want to leave you high and dry, thinking, no, no pun intended on that one, thinking you're going to have reclaimed water when you probably won't. I would go with the safe bet, anyway. Okay.
Chris, on that area there where it goes, because I used to receive, I'm sorry, Chris Dobson? I had a question for Chris, just for a point of clarification. Because right now, there is a pipe that runs onto our property, because I used to purchase reclaimed water from the town of Florence. So it is plumbed already there, is that correct? Could you talk a little bit about that as well?
Yeah, and I don't, I already understand that. The problem is, is you were taking bulk deliveries, you were taking acre-feet at a time. To irrigate this, you're going to be taking a couple of 300 gallons, and so it's a whole different pumping scenario. It starts mimicking a water system.
Actually, it wasn't. It varied from time to time, and that was one of my, you know, complaints, because it was always going up and down and up and down, and very rarely, I was getting acre-feet at a time. It was actually...
But your entirety of your delivery was a big delivery versus 500 gallons for this little bit of turf, which, in my humble opinion, sets a bad precedent for a town that's water scarce, even with, even using reclaimed water, which we could turn into drinking water. I don't want to see it put on grass that's not being usable.
Thank you. So, yes, Mr. Dobson is correct, that there is a pipe there, and the commissioner's correct that, or the chair is correct in the standpoint of that the two are not analogous to one or the other, they're very separate things, but there is a pipe. Yeah, I was, I was speaking very globally of the complexities of the project, not specifically to the minutia of making a delivery to one single person. So, yes.
And on, just a kudos on Exhibit L, your neighborhood park, the modifications you did there, thumbs up on that. That's very playable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
And just don't forget to modify your modified major street section. You just show a vertical curb in your depiction here on your cross-section. I think you want curb and gutter there. I think we touched everything else. Oh, the one last thing was on the wastewater infrastructure, and we touched on this last time, and maybe Chris got involved somewhere along the line. When you look at an aerial photo, you see the property basically to the south of the Gila River drainage over to Attaway is within the town's planning area, and understanding that unless we're planning a, another wastewater plant to the west, they're going to need to have some sort of a corridor to bring, to pump wastewater back to the existing plant. And with that in mind, the thought that I threw out last time was, should we have this developer put a parallel line in to their west boundary so that a future development can buy into that line and pump? can buy into that line and pump wastewater back through there, and not have to tear up any roads or anything else to get, to make that happen? So that's something I'm just going to throw with the town engineer. I just want to be very forward-thinking on this, that if we need that, let's ask them to do that now. I don't want to tear up roads, streets, or anything else in the future when we could have done it now. So, Chris, I'll lob that ball in your direction. Okay? Thanks for responding to all the stuff that you were able to respond to, much appreciated. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. No, thank you.
Chair, if I might bring up a couple of points in the stipulations. I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen in any of our reviews this many stipulations, but I'd like to start with number thirteen, which is the traffic impact analysis. And we just went through this not that long ago with Western crossings, and part of my issue is that, as I understand it, our traffic planner is with Penau County, and when we talked about Western crossing, it came to light that that was already a red zone, existing before we built at Western Crossing. Now I see they've got the turn lane in, and that's terrific, but we are looking at major development that's going to impact two eighty-seven and Adamsville Road. And I brought this up last time, and I understand this is not on the developer or Mr. Dobson, it's on the town. And what I would like to say is that, I guarantee you, when Pulte came to town to build out on Hunt Highway, a little dinky two-lane road, everyone knew the traffic was coming. Everyone knew you were going to outgrow Hunt Highway. And yet, ten years, fifteen years later, nothing was done. And so we're in this horrific situation where we have two schools on a bad curve with kids riding bicycles, trying to cross that road at people going sixty-five miles an hour. What I'm saying is, in the planning process, and it's one of the main reasons why I joined the commission, we're planning. I understand this is a ten-year build-out, I understand it's being phased, but I am not seeing the town stepping up to doing the planning now, that says, in two years, in three years, we already have Bisbee Ranch, they're not built out yet, and that's already impacting Adamsville. That is a town road. That is something we can control. Two eighty-seven's another story, that's going to be a nightmare, and this is before the North-South Highway comes in, right? So my request is to the town, can we not put together, and I would ask the vice mayor and commissioner, or council member, Bucelato, have a work session with the council and start looking, how does the town look at major developments that are going to affect our town roads, and how does the town set some parameters so at certain bars, we need to be ready, and we need to be putting it into the capital improvement plan, or whatever it is we need to do? Instead of ten years down the road, we're impacted, I mean, I drive on Hunt Highway, the backup is past Safeway, right? Because they can't make the turn. This is crazy, we knew this was coming, and nothing got done. So, that is my request to the council. If we are to keep approving these well-thought-through development plans, and they are, somewhere I feel we're not doing our job if the town isn't holding up our end of the bargain on the traffic and road studies, when you already have the county planners telling us that they let things go red.
And just a footnote, Dan, I think what, one of our concerns when we had that discussion was the area of impact that the TIA looked at, because it was very close to the development, and we believed that it should be miles around there because of the impacts of all the traffic that come and go from here.
If, if...
Can I just finish on that? Because it's the stipulations, and if you, the stipulation number eleven is talking about a fire-police station. Now, I would venture to say, they need to have access, right? And if the roads are clogged, there's no point in having that station out there, because they're not going to be able to get to town. So they go hand-in-hand, right? This is public safety. So, that's it. Thank you.
This is going to sound weird coming from me, because I'm usually the most adversarial person up here. Thank you, guys, for being so open to our suggestions and stipulations and questions, and so far, it's been two meetings, but so far, you guys are a joy to deal with. That being said, and I'm not, I'm not going to go the other way here, I have, this is a question that's probably more to staff and everybody else here, and this is just, it seems like everything else in the plan looks good, looks like we should, hey, we should kind of go this way, with the exception of Phase Five, because that's where the ADOT corridor is coming in. Is there a way procedurally for us to just vote on everything but Phase Five, with Phase Five being contingent on ADOT? Because ADOT's ADOT, they're going to do what they're going to do, and, you know, they may tell you one thing now, and then eight years from now go, yeah, you know, no, and it's ADOT, what are you going to do? You know, it's really kind of take it. So I don't know if that's, if that's, can we do that? Can we say, you know, if we're going to move forward on this, it's, Phase Five is not, do you see what I'm saying? I'm, or am I a stammering fool up here?
Commissioner members, no, I understand what you're saying completely, and I've never run across that specific way of doing that. My suggestion would be doing exactly what you're doing. You're expressing concern, Phase Five is set up to be the last phase of any development out there, and, you know, if you wanted to, I don't know, add another stipulation or amend a stipulation, or something of that nature, that basically says that confirmation from ADOT will be required before any development of Phase Five.
Great stipulation. Not sure how the...
I'm just trying to, you know, trying to make it work.
Commissioner, Chairman, we'd be open to a stipulation that had language similar to that, yes, that we would be, you know, that we would continue to work with ADOT throughout their process, and, you know, when we get to Phase Five, we would, you know, check back in, I guess, with them, see where they're at. We would probably be hesitant to accept a stipulation that would preclude us from developing Phase Five, had by the time we get to Phase Five, ADOT is still in their steam, we don't have funding, and we have a fifteen-hundred-foot wide corridor that's going to go roughly through this area. I don't know how you would feel about that sort of language, if it was ten years from now, and you were all still commission members, I don't know that you'd be saying, you know what, you guys should continue to hold on Phase Five, but you tell me how you would feel if we were in that situation.
I just, I just want it out there, that, you know, because, you know, we run into this, you know, the vice chair brought up widening Hunt Highway, and, you know, everybody is gung-ho to do it, and then Union Pacific goes, yeah, we'll let you know. You know, and ADOT is kind of the same creature in that way. They're like, yeah, you know, we, we'll get back to you.
I think language that Larry, Mr. Harmer mentioned is appropriate. You know, we definitely don't want to be precluded from developing Phase Five, ever. You know, we don't want to be beholden to ADOT forever.
Right, no, absolutely not.
And I think you're asking us to do that, so, okay, great.
No, yeah, I just, it's just, it's, it's, let's have something in there that says, a lot of this is going to be contained, well, for Phase Five, is going to be contingent on what is going on with ADOT. Yeah, at a certain point, ADOT's got a fisher cut bait.
I was going to use different terminology, but we appreciate it.
Me too, but we're being recorded.
Thank you, commissioners.
Good, good discussion, thank you. We're good?
Yes.
Larry, staff, anything else that we should be looking at here?
No, just a reminder that this is a public hearing, you need to open it to the public for comments.
Let's see, where is my... See, I don't, I don't have that noted in my agenda that this is a public hearing.
One other thing, if I can.
The agenda, presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval, conditions.
That's twice tonight I miss seeing something. Super.
If I may, and I just, it's just a clarification, because I think, I think I can safely speak for everybody, that we are very happy with the way things have been going with you guys so far.
Yes.
If you, if it comes off like there's some, any kind of pushback, it's not, it's, it's really us trying to, like, like they've said, future-proof what's going on, because we've spent the last, I'm in my second term here, my first term, it was basically trying to correct mistakes from twenty years ago, or try to wrap our hands around that in a way that works for everybody involved. So that, that's really what this is. It's not, you know, it's not like, these developers, it's not that, it's not that thing at all. It's just trying to make it so that twenty years from now, the next P&amp;Z commission then isn't saying, what the hell were those guys thinking?
Exactly, yep. Okay, this is a public hearing, I've been corrected, so which is good, good to have people to do that. And so we'll open it for a public comment, if anyone from the public would like to make any comments on this, please come up and introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Courtney Ramirez from down here south of the Gila. I wish I, our first amendment was not restricted to three minutes during meetings, because there's a lot to cover sometimes, and we have a lot of questions. So, I really hope you guys are being observant on when people are trying to pull the wool over your eyes with certain things. And Kathy, I know you've mentioned quite a bit about the parks, you know, we only have really two parks in town, and yet we have all these builders coming in to build, and they're all HOA, and we know many of those HOAs don't want the outsiders in those parks. So, you know, I don't think we, as the town, can force these developers to let the rest of the community play in their parks. So, are you guys going to do anything about that? Another thing is, you know, again, we've been trying to fix these mistakes that were made years ago, right? With all this stuff that was pre-approved back then, and many developments still in the, in the process, that we can't do anything about, because they've already been approved. This is almost seven hundred acres. Is it wise for Florence to work with such huge pieces of land at one time? Does it really benefit us? Or is it just easier on the developer's pocketbook to rezone such a huge project? That's going to be three thousand units, about ten thousand people, okay? I hope you guys are keeping it, not just the units, there's going to be two, three, five, six people per home, and how many cars? Then we have Langley, that's going to be, what, twenty-five thousand people? And no roads? Like, I really hope we are looking out for our best interest in what's coming with these developers, because it's scary. And, two, with, you know, people are talking about access and roads and for emergency vehicles, just like when staff accidentally left out suggestions to you guys, right? Stipulations, it was an accidental oversight, which I think it was done on purpose. Are we really paying attention to, just like what they did with Centennial Park? We only had one way in and one way out, and then you guys approved Phase One and Phase Two right across the way. Well, in a mass emergency, yeah, the other gate is locked, only for fire and police, but if there was a mass emergency and people, us in our homes had to evacuate in a mass, urgent manner, we can't. We, people are going to die. Okay? So, when this comes to us, you guys need to be mindful of that, too, not just for emergency vehicles. You guys need to be mindful of people need to leave in an emergency for their homes. Three minutes.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak in the public hearing? Anyone online, Maricela, has raised her hand?
If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand. No.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to board and commission up here. Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
Nope, nothing else.
Okay, we're ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, PZ twenty-three fifteen, with the stipulations as recommended by staff in the package, and the stipulation that when we get to Phase Five, that it be reviewed based on the ADOT's recommendations at the time.
A point of clarification, you're not actually motioning to approve, you're motioning to recommendation of approval to the town council.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
I said, you're not making a motion to approve, you're making a motion approval to the town council.
This is going in, so...
We're not approving, we're not recommending approval.
Recommend.
A motion to the, to, recommend to move to the town council. So, I'm sorry, yes, so I'll make a motion to recommend this PZ twenty-three fifteen, that it go forward to the town council, with the stipulations as stated by staff in the report, and with the added stipulation that Phase Five be re-reviewed at the time it's going into effect, based on ADOT's position at the time.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Adam, and a second by Commissioner Kapalongo for approval to move this forward to council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We got five ayes on that one. Thank you, team, we appreciate you making the trek out here and visiting with us this evening, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, new business presentation slash discussion of lot dimension requirements for the highway business commercial B-two zone.
This co-development came kind of in the tail end of our mass code review. So as staff is reviewing the code, their current development code, we found that the minimum requirements for lot sizes in the B-two, or highway business commercial zoning classification, had a minimum lot width and depth, despite not having a minimum lot area. We've had a couple of comments from developers that this sometimes may prohibit them from developing with current development standards, or how they wish to create these pads for new developments. So we decided to look back and see how other cities and municipalities went about the lot size and width and depth. So we currently have a minimum lot width of two hundred feet and a minimum lot depth of one hundred feet. The existing B-two zone lots that do not meet the standard are usually, or at least the ones that are existing, usually don't meet the standard, but because they're existing and they usually have a business on them, or they're within a PUD that has a different standard, they usually get by. But with new commercial developments coming in zones that do not fall within one of these groups, they see a disadvantage. With that being said, the requirement is a carryover from earlier versions of the current town development code. In modern developments, primarily shopping centers on pads, they vary in size and dimensions. Now, all commercial development still needs to meet parking, setbacks, landscaping, drainage retention, and all of those that are required by the development code, but usually they don't need that much space. The research that was completed by staff found that the town of Marana does not have a lot dimension requirement for their commercial zones, but a one-acre minimum lot area for their place, their zonings considered neighborhood commercial, or a ten-acre minimum lot for what is, they consider village commercial, and those are usually bigger plazas. The city of Casa Grande requires a hundred lot, hundred-foot lot width minimum for the B-one zone, and their B-two zone requires a hundred fifty lot width minimum, with lot corners requiring two hundred minimum lot width. However, they do not have a lot length requirement, they only have these width requirements. The city of Coolidge requires a hundred-foot lot width minimum for their commercial zones of C-one and C-two, and the corner lots have a larger lot width minimum as well. The city of... of Chandler and the town of Gilbert do not list maximum lot dimension requirements for their commercial zones, but they do have a maximum building coverage percentage, so how much this building can cover that lot. And the town of Queen Creek lists a 50-foot minimum lot width and 100-foot minimum lot depth for both C1 and C2. Based on what we've seen in other cities and towns, we're thinking of just doing away with these lot depths or widths entirely. We wanted to bring it here for discussion, just in general, just to see what you would have in terms of comments on this. And that pretty much concludes my presentation on that. And if you would have any questions, I am open to them now.
Mr. Chairman, just to add a couple of notes to that, too. I've gone ahead and looked at a couple of, of our B, existing B2, you know, properties and things that we have, and they're all over the map. You know, some of them are wider, but not as long, or, you know, they're just kind of all over the place. There's no commonality to them. You look at the Safeway Plaza out at Anthem, and each one of those parcels out there has been divided into an individual lot that does not meet any of these standards, but it was part of the PUD, and they were allowed to do it that way. But there's, there's just no real standard. It's based on what the, you know, end-user layout, their building is going to be on the properties. And like Mari Selah said, they still have to meet minimum parking, minimum setbacks. They have to meet, excuse me, minimum landscaping based on our code. They have to meet water retention basins based on our engineering standards, all those types of things. And that really dictates how a lot is going to develop, how it's going to lay out. The, the standard, the only time that you would run into something that, that you might even want to consider a minimum would be on some, some small individual remnant parcel, if you will, someplace. And I don't anticipate that really happening. We've kind of used those all up, one way or another. The PUDs that you're looking at now, they set aside a certain acreage amount for mixed use or for commercial business, or whatever it might be. But if they parcel it out, each one of those development parcels still has to meet the criteria established in the Development Code. Again, for parking setbacks and all the things related to it. Safeway Plaza, where there's shared parking, you know, that's something that we promote in our Development Code, is the sharing of parking facilities. Excuse me. In some cases, where you have mixed use, where there is commercial and office, for example, they may be, they have different peak hours of utilization. Shared parking is used in those. So, again, having a minimum dimension of a lot isn't really practical. Some might be wider, some might be narrower, some might be shallower. So, that's why we were bringing it back, is it just wasn't part of the original work session that you had with council. It wasn't part of the original sessions that were held specifically with the Commission, and, and it hadn't been advertised as part of the code amendments that have been moving forward since then. So, that, that is really the only reason why it's been handled separately.
Larry, it almost seems like you're arguing for the way that Chandler and Gilbert does it.
And Chandler and Gilbert seem to be developing just fine without the standards. You know, again, they, they have the same requirements for parking setback, well, maybe not the same numbers, but they have requirements for parking setbacks, landscaping, retention areas, all those types of things. And development is, is not seen to be hindered by it. And the other parts of it, we're not asking you to change, for example, how the orientation of drive-throughs are and things of that nature. That all stays the same.
I'm sorry, is, is development being hindered by these minimum standards?
Well, potentially so. I think a good example is the, again, the parcel across Hunt Highway, where the Circle K is now. We've seen some schematics on how that would lay out, and of course, they're looking at shared parking, which is very reasonable out there. But they, who knows what it might be, but let's say a Dutch Brothers site. You know, they don't need 100 by 200 if they're sharing parking, they're, they're a drive-through. Parking is for their employees only, and so to mandate a minimum site that, you know, ends up being in some way, and I won't call it a waste of space, but it's just over, overkill for some certain types of developments. So, the larger-scale commercial that we would anticipate, I don't see this as being a problem at all. I see it actually being partially as an incentive.
I don't know. I think Dutch Brothers should have a 200-foot minimum, because that way keeps the drive-through traffic...
Well, they do have a queuing, we do have queuing minimums.
No, you know what I mean. Instead of spilling out all over the roadway like they do now.
Yeah, well, that's the problem with, with, you know, some of the queueings. That's why they've gone to the double, double bays, too.
Right.
So, the businesses accommodate themselves. They figure out how to make it work. Otherwise, it's not an economically feasible or functional site for them.
But, but thus far, this hasn't posed a problem?
No.
Okay.
So, in your experience in dealing with the development community that's going to be doing this, is there something here that makes the most sense for them and for staff, be able to regulate to get the quality product that we're looking for?
Well, that, that's why we're suggesting that, that the minimum lot width and depth really is, I won't call it impractical necessarily, but it just, it, it becomes almost meaningless, because they still have to meet all these other standards, no matter what the lot size would be.
So, it sounds like, again, you're arguing for the way that Gilbert and Chandler does it.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, you know, it works for them and other communities that I've dealt with and over the, you know, if you were to, could do a comparison chart and, and put down 50 cities and towns, you'd find 25 different ways of doing it, you know? Something that I don't even want to get into here, but sometime if you really want to get into a really interesting discussion, we can talk about FARs, which is what California has gone to, what they call floor area ratio, where you can, a commercial lot is, it can be 100%, which means 100% of the lot can be covered by a building, potentially. But they still have to provide all the parking and setbacks and all those other things, so the buildings go up. So, I mean, that's, but, you know, we're well beyond trying to get into that kind of a Development Code process.
Any other questions?
Nothing here.
So, you were not looking for any direction this evening? Just give, bring it to our attention for discussion?
Yeah, we wanted to kind of get any feedback you might have. If you think, if you don't see any major problems with it, then we'll bring it back as a public hearing code amendment.
From what I can see in the Chandler and Gilbert area, it seems to be working. They're accommodating those businesses and without making frontage and depth and requirements there. So, I'm, I'm good with that.
And the other, and I guess the other problem that, and it relates back to some of your earlier concerns, too. Every time you have an individual lot broken out like that, regimented, then you're, you have businesses looking for individual driveways out onto your street system. And again, by carrying, getting rid of some of those minimum dimensions and encouraging shared parking facilities, then you can start minimizing the number of driveway and curb cuts that come out onto our major streets and, you know, arterials.
Is there, making the change, is there any way that comes back to bite us in the rear end?
I couldn't say no. There isn't any way, because somebody will find a way, but then...
I've always been of the opinion, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Because once you, if it ain't broken, you fix it, now it's going to break. You, you see what I'm saying? It's just, it's one of those, it hasn't hindered development, yet.
Well...
Huh? No, please, say.
No, it's, it's not, hasn't hindered it, per se. It's been a concern that's been raised by some of the larger commercial property owners. Because as they look at how they want to carve the different parcels, well, look at, again, the Safeway Plaza. There's no parcel, two parcels in there are equal dimensions. You know, every one is different. It's a wedge-shaped parcel to begin with, with the narrow end at the north and wider end at the south. And so, we're, Starbucks is going in...
That falls under their, their PUD, so it doesn't, this doesn't apply.
But it also starts to demonstrate that there's no commonality in the formula either. I mean, there's nothing in there that's 100 by 200. You know, some are trapezoidal or triangular in shape, and, I mean, they're just, you know, rhombics and every other geometric form we can come up with when you start getting into those types of things. And so, when a subdivider, you know, a commercial subdivider, not all of them do. Some of them maintain ownership of the entire parcel. But that, that particular one, excuse me, the Safeway one, they do sell off those parcels under a common shared parking agreement. So, I just see it as, in a way, it's kind of an incentive by getting rid of this. We keep, people keep asking for more commercial, for more tax base, and in some ways, this could even be an incentive to help that along.
When the good thing about code amendments is if it doesn't work, and we do find it starting to cause problems, we can come back...
Yeah.
And return to what needs, or turn to something that would be better, such as with the parking we found when we redid the parking code, and then we just came back with that new for convenience stores slash gas stations. We came back and updated it to meet the needs of the development now.
And, and I understand, that's all well and good.
Yeah.
But if we change it, and then we approve things, that become a problem, even we change it again, we're still stuck with that problem.
Okay. Well, from that standpoint, I don't anticipate any significant...
No, but you see, you see how that works there. It's like, it wasn't broke. We broke it. We're going to fix it, but now we still got to live with this, we got to live with this leaky faucet over here.
Yeah. Okay, this isn't broken, but I see a lot of cracks.
I, I'm just spitballing here, so...
And I can see where this would be advantageous for staff in dealing with situations where you have topography washes that cut through the area, angular streets and things like that, where you need a little bit more tweakability, and this would give you that to do that, to make something fit in. Like you say, if it's got to fit into an angled area, you can, you can make it work then without having that, well, it's got to be 100, it's got to be 200, when it just won't work, so...
Right, but then we could also make that exception in the, in the approval process.
Well, you can't, not unless it's a PUD. If it's, if it's a hard number, it's a hard number, unless they can demonstrate a rationale based on state law for variance. And that can, that gets really dicey when you get into those types of things.
Yeah, that's why I think it's...
And that's, believe me, that one's from experience.
Again, this is, I'm just trying to, having spent three years dealing with previous problems, trying to prevent that, you know?
Yeah, there's no action, there's no public hearing, just a discussion.
Yeah. And if you have any other questions on it, feel free to, you know, feed them to us in the meantime while we prepare this in ordinance form.
Yep. Super. Thank you. Okay, Directors' Report, Western's Crossing Update, Scheduled Public Hearing to the Code Amendments, and Home Tour 2024.
Oh, let's see, Western Crossings, the barricades are down, the right, the left-hand turn lanes in and out are finished and open. ADOT will be back around the 13th of February. You notice it's all striped, but they don't have what they call thermal striping down. And that's a, it's something that's adhered to the asphalt and whatever. So, they'll take a couple hours someday later this month to put that down. And that's a lot stronger, more permanent type of striping that's out there. But it's open. Matter of fact, I had one of the residents yesterday call me wanting to know when that was going to happen. I told her I'd look into it. An hour later, it disappeared, and I got all the credit for it. So, that was cool. But the code amendment public hearing is, the first reading is next month, this coming Monday.
This coming Monday is the first reading for the code amendments at Town Council. That also includes public hearing. And then the second reading for those code amendments that we've gone through will be February 20th, which is a Tuesday, due to the present day holiday on the 19th. And that'll be second reading and action. And then Home Tour. Home Tour is February 10th. I'm really praying that rain comes faster and stays away that day, but we are carefully looking at the forecast. We'll still have it rain or shine, but we prefer it not to. Tickets are on sale at the community center and also at the Pinell County Museum for $20 before the day of, and the day of, it'll be 25. You can also buy it online through the brown paper bag tickets.
Very good. Larry, just a question about the Western Crossings. Are they, have they submitted model home plans? Are they ready to move forward on those? I mean, they've...
From a, from a building construction permit? Yes, they've submitted.
Good. Yeah, let's get them going. Good. Okay.
There was a write-up in the local paper about the Home Tour, and I had to share with my wife your exuberance about that, Marisol. I said, she just lit up talking about that.
I'm very excited.
Having done it a couple of times, it's, it's well worth the time. It's really cool. Really, really neat. It's nice that the people open their homes. There's a lot of fun history to see.
There's a couple on the tour this year. I, unfortunately, am out of town, but there's a couple on the tour this year I'd like to see the inside of. They have not been on the tour for several years, and they can, can says, you know, conceded to allow the Home Tour to invade their homes. So, that's kind of encouraging, too.
Last time I did it, several of them had warm cookies for you, too, which was really cool. Okay, call to the Commission.
Well, I'd like to just follow on to that. And thank you, Chair, for publicizing the Home Tour for many meetings now, and, and Mari, I know, works hard on, on getting it. So, I wanted to mention that at the museum, we're on the tour, and we have a special guest speaker. It's Nancy Kaywood. And I don't know if any of you know who she is. She's a third-generation cotton farmer on the border of Coolidge and Casa Grande, which, to me, Coolidge and Florence are like this in terms of farming, right? We're very, very similar. She has faced the water issue, a solar farm, and continues to farm her property. Mr. Dobson, right, has been a farmer, and he has chosen to develop. So, she has been to the battles with the council and with her neighboring farmers. So, I think it's going to be very interesting. At noon, she'll be at the museum. If anybody'd like to come and hear her speak, she's really terrific.
Good stuff. Are the Commission members, any? Okay. Mr. Kapalongo, your favorite motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vander, Mr. Kapalongo, and a second from Commissioner Vanderstark to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned.